All this meeting order, please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will have roll call, please.
Pass on the call?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Governor? Delaware?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. Well, welcome to this Tuesday, the twenty-fourth meeting. We will once again start with my quote for the day. This particular quote is from John F. Kennedy, albeit short, it has a lot of impact and meaning. Leadership and learning are indispensable to each other. Most of us here, our class began when we raised our right hand and accepted the oath of office and we had the privilege to learn under Professor Hill. Now, we get the privilege of learning under Professor Shrupp. Okay, that being said, we shall move on. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda, if anything would, anybody would like to entertain that motion or they have anything to add, now would be the time for that.
The email that you sent, those got added to this agenda, do we need to make a motion to add those?
Those got added.
Okay.
And one thing that wasn't on that email, we did take out the decertifications of the TIPS, because we just have a quick question before we bring those back.
Okay. With that in mind, then I will make a motion to approve the agenda as it is written.
I'll second.
Okay, may I ask a motion in a second to approve the agenda, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, carried. We have, well, we have the citizens' comments portion of the meeting here, so if anybody has anything they would like to say to the council, now is the opportune time for that. Seeing none and hearing none, we have no public hearings. We will move on to reading and approval of the regular meeting minutes from October tenth.
I'll move approval of the October tenth regular meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the regular meeting minutes, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, carried. Now, we have the condensed version of the minutes for the paper. For October tenth.
I will move approval of the condensed minutes from the October tenth regular meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the condensed version of the minutes, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, carried. We shall move on to the consent agenda, which consists of the audit of city bills, the gambling report, the library board minutes, pay estimate one twenty-twenty-three GA apron reconstruction and expansion project, the exempt permit for the morrisary women of today, and a pay estimate number eight, final runway fourteen dash thirty-two reconstruction slash extension. And last, a pay estimate number two, taxi line reconstruction and taxiway crack seal. And we'll just need a motion to approve those items. Any discussion? Well, we should probably entertain the motion first and then we can have a-
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
I will second.
Okay, now we have a first and a second on the items on the consent agenda and I will throw it back to the council for discussion on any of the items.
Anything that you'd like to add to any of that, Rebecca, with anything with the pay estimates or anything? Everything seems to be in line?
Yeah.
From what I've seen?
Yep, just those, you've got two of those other pay estimates via email.
Right.
Line forty-eight, I know it keeps getting brought up, but we talked about that at a previous meeting about withholding, did that finally get completed?
It did.
Perfect.
I see line item twenty-eight, we're the pro owner of a utility truck?
Yes.
Fifty-one thousand, one-six-six, alright.
Did you look at the basketball court over there? I seen him working on it one day, but I didn't, I never went to check it out.
The one at Green River or Wells?
At Wells.
Oh, no, we haven't gone over there, I just heard that was done.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't checked it out. I, like I said, I was working over that way and I seen him working on it. So I didn't, I just haven't gotten over to take a look at it, but.
I was just questioning line fifty-eight, it's not a big deal, but part, the parking permits for the UMM regents, that was for Griffin and Cameron. Did we have to pay? What was that all about, I guess, is that for the, when the regents came to visit, or?
So, that is for their parking permits, so Griffin's
Oh, I see.
He, he has an office at the U.
Oh.
And so even staff members have to pay for parking. And then Cameron is
Green Core.
Green Core.
I didn't know he had an office up there.
Yeah, he moved from City Hall over to, up by Troy.
Okay. Yeah, two-hundred-and-eighty-four bucks, I was saying, I just wanted a little clarification of that.
Yeah, that's for two of them, yeah.
Okay, alright.
Yep.
Thanks for, thanks for that. Any other discussion on the items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor of those items on the consent agenda signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, same side, carried. We shall move on to petitions, requests, and communications. We have a donation of two-hundred dollars from Deborah Quant. It's for bike trail upkeep in memory of Levon Schleeman. I guess I only have one question on that, do we have a designated spot for that money be, because it's they specified it for specifically for the bike trail? I mean, do we have a separate fund or does it just go into our maintenance fund?
It goes in the general fund, which the park department is part of, so.
So how do we know that it gets used for that? I mean, that's, I guess, my question, but when they, when somebody makes a bequest like that, I guess, I don't know.
You'd like to see it be utilized, used for that.
For, for that purpose, right?
For that purpose.
It just doesn't get lost in the shuffle. There, I don't know if there's any way we could do that, or earmark it for that, or without making it?
I don't know, I think that's just basically a bookkeeping issue about where to put it. I don't know that you have a specific fund or
Anything, no, there's no specific fund for that specific deal.
And so that, that becomes an issue of, of that and to expand that into your bookkeeping for every I want to do it, you could probably have thirty different spots and it would be tough.
Yeah, yeah, I, I understand it would be difficult, I just thought
Making sure that we utilize it for that.
Yeah, it was, I mean, it was important enough for this person to, you know, to make it a specific bequest, so I just thought, eh, maybe we could somehow do it without making Whitney's life real miserable, I get that, but.
I don't know, and you know, I, I feel like it, it got put in there and they didn't designate like to buy a bench to put at the bike trail. So to me, if you put it in the general fund where the park department is and we pay for costs to maintain, we like to mow it, buy it, or some snow, or whatever. But, you know, unless you wanted to specifically purchase something for two-hundred, that's up to you.
I don't think, I don't think it was, it was mentioned here for upkeep, so if it's put in there for that, you know, and it's used in that department, I think that's fine.
Yeah, I guess I'm fine, whatever the council thinks is fine with me. I just thought we should have a little conversation about it anyway.
I'll make a motion to approve the donation.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to accept the donation for Deborah Quan for bike trail upkeep. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, carried. We have no ordinances and resolutions, we move to the decertification to the next meeting. So we shall move on to the city manager's newsletter.
Yeah, so just a reminder, next Monday, we have a work session at five-fifteen. Seventh Street surveys have went out, we're still doing union negotiations. And we've just had one that's put in the proposal, we still haven't had the other one yet. The planning commission met last week, they discussed the brew pub and the brewer taprooms. So the zoning ordinance, we have gotten that squared away and ready to move to the next phase. Still waiting to do the final ordinance for the brew pubs and taprooms, waiting to hear back from the city attorney on that one. As I had some questions, some of the items that were in the sample one are already in our brewery, or I'd say alcohol ordinance, so trying to see what we need on there and what we don't. So they still have to, to go with that. The one thing we do need to talk about though is do we want to do off sale on Sundays? So that the, this moves forward and goes through that we would, they would be able to sell the growlers on Sunday and have people take them with them. Currently, our ordinance says that it is not allowed, on sale is allowed, but not off sale.
We, we just never changed that to, to coincide with this?
I thought we thought we were going to and then it was, then we just closed it, because hasn't it been?
We, we open on certain, we open Sundays on holidays.
We leave it up to the discretion of Dean, the manager.
But that's not closing, that's not the same as no liquor sales on Sunday, that's just, we close our liquor store, we don't sell, sell on Sundays.
But is it in?
I haven't seen anything, and I did ask her the question too. So maybe I'm reading it wrong, because she hasn't responded to that question yet. But it looked like to me that it was just on sale was, Sunday liquor was on sale.
Well, then I think we should move to change that, because we should at least have the option
Right.
to do it, because it is legal in the state now, so if we would decide to do it
Yeah.
at least it's, it's been changed, I mean, our, our, we don't have to be open if we don't want to, but
Right.
we were able to do that, I mean, if these establishments are having the brews and, and they're open on those days, I think that if they want to have their off sale and, and sell that, I think that's perfectly fine.
Well, I think it gives them another opportunity to, you know, make some more revenue and
Sure.
And, and that's what the discussion for the planning commission centered around as well.
Yep.
Right.
I sure thought we had changed that.
I kind of thought, well, I think we had agreed to do it, I, maybe it's, we never actually changed the ordinance.
Yep. Because we did talk about, well, we're not going to be open Sundays, but there may be Sundays, and I thought we did have an open Sunday.
We did, a few.
I thought we did change it, though, and we left it up to Dean.
Like on the July fourth, when it was a Sunday, and
We've been open on different Sundays.
Yep. It's up to Dean, it says in his
But again, that's up to him to sell, if the ordinance says he can't, he, it's not up to him to sell, if the ordinance says we can't sell on Sundays.
We'll have to look into it.
Right, let me verify then, that I'm reading, let me verify that I'm reading right, and if I, if I'm if I'm wrong, great, and we'll leave it as is, if not, we'll look at changing it.
I get it, I get it.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, it's a good idea.
Yeah, because then you read it that way, because otherwise we might have, I mean, if that's what it still says.
And I could be reading it wrong, so, well, we'll look, we'll look into it more, knowing that we, you all are on board if we need to change it, to, to change it.
Right.
Moving down to the tree board, so the tree board received one of the, the grants that they applied for, we haven't heard from the second, so that was, they were awarded a hundred and four thousand, eight hundred for tree trimming and purchasing a trailer for tree maintenance. So, big thank you to Sue Granger for putting the application together and the tree board. And then going down to the advisory committee. Just something I've been thinking about, I know our charter is unique, but looking, as I'm working through union negotiations, working on different personnel things and other items in the city. You know, I talked to Mayor Waller's after the last meeting that maybe it would be beneficial for us to look at creating an advisory committee consistent of two members, just to kind of go through, you know, if I have any concerns, someone to bounce ideas off of, some big issues that are coming up that maybe will need to be, or, or could become a contentious issue that, that we have some discussions legally and private before we come and bring it to council.
I think, I think that's a great idea.
Absolutely.
Agreed.
I think that's a wonderful idea, because it's not, these are issues that are hard to deal with and, and not to have somebody to balance it off of, or to discuss it with, or, or see if you're actually going in the right direction is, it's crucial, so yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Yep.
Yeah, I think, you know, we, we've had this discussion before, you know, obviously, city employees, they have a grievance process through their unions. But, you know, there's not to say that if we establish this committee that maybe, I don't know, that might be one option for people, if they have a grievance, they can maybe come to the advisory committee. I don't know if that's your intent at all here, but maybe it's, maybe that's not it, but it's more for
It felt like it was more for me
Gotcha, that's fine.
To, to bring things to council.
Right.
Here's what I'm seeing, this
Just so we understand.
Yes.
Am I, am I in the right, does this feel like the right option?
Right, and not only just personnel stuff, but just other, you know, projects that may be coming aboard that may be contentious and having some conversations before bringing it to a big open council meeting.
I think it's a great idea to, if you just establish kind of the purpose of it and make sure we, no one understands, how, so how do we establish, go about establishing that?
We just do it ourselves, I mean, we, you do it, you only have two council members, so you, you're not in, you don't have a quorum.
So you need two volunteers?
Right.
Do we have any volunteers?
I, I would volunteer.
I would volunteer.
Brian and Kim, alright, anybody?
And maybe, and maybe we do it for, maybe we do it for a certain term, or a certain period, like so many months, and then, and then switch it out?
Yep.
You know, maybe we do it for, I don't, I don't know, if, if we could put a timeframe on it, and then we could do it, and then I'd be more than glad to step aside after a couple of months and let somebody else do it to, you know, get it, you know, get a different perspective from that too. But we only keep it down to
I think you kind of can lead that back on, what you feel is like, perfect, oh, never mind, Kim, you don't know.
You know, maybe what would be a good idea is if you just kind of frame it all and, and brought it to the next meeting and we can just formally approve it, and I don't know, do we need to go that, into that greater depth with it, or? I think we should probably just have a little bit of
Well, or, I mean
Formality to it.
Our, our work session is next Monday.
Yeah.
We could also discuss it a little bit then, too.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Not that, not that we can make any formal decisions at the work session, but we could set some framework, what that looks like.
The last time I created a
Or you can, you can identify what that looks like.
Committee, like a personnel committee, prior, it was just I'm needing this, who wants to be on it, and then they approved who was on it, but yeah, I can bring some parameters on what I'm thinking and
Yep.
we can talk about it.
And, and another thought on that too, I mean, it doesn't have to be set in stone, I mean, it can be just something that you do.
Yep.
I mean, maybe we don't have to have it as a policy or a, a certain deal where it's like, if you just want to meet with two council members, two council members, it's not a quorum. It's, it's very, very okay to do that. And so, you know, we don't have to have a set format or something that we put out there that we, you know, it can just be, it can be just that too.
Well, I know we went, when we established the law enforcement, the one that you and Jeff are a part of, and I think we had a formal you know, creation of that, I think almost this should probably follow that same guidelines, you know, so we have at least some structure to it. And, you know, purpose, time, you know, limits, that kind of thing, and then
I don't know that, I don't know that there is a, a, a set time or a set deal, it's, it's more upon
It's up to us, I suppose, to create.
It's more upon need. It's more of a need base, you might not need it for six months.
Okay, so
And then you might need it for
It's not a, let's meet every this, but you know
You might need, yeah, like you said, you might need it every week for a month, but then you won't need it for six months.
Yeah.
It's, it's just really, us, as a council, to be able to help or
Yep, yep, I understand the purpose of it.
Yeah, shoot it off of just two of us.
I understand the purpose of it, I was just wondering if there should be a little more structure to it than that, but if, if nobody else thinks that, that's fine too, but we'll just leave it at that, I guess, and you can bring it back to us and
Yeah, we can definitely have conversations on Monday.
I think it's a great idea too, by the way.
Yeah, then the next, we can go into the charter commission, so you all got the letter from Allison. Kind of how, what she got from our charter on what needs to happen, so it looks like the last time there was a change in the charter was two thousand and five. I don't know if the charter commission met before then, or if it just came to council to change the charter, I'm not quite positive. But it looks like from what she's saying that we need to get one of the members that was on their previous to become the secretary and sign everybody off. So there's two people that she stated, one that Blaine mentioned and one that was on the charter. My thought is if anyone knows who they are, how to get in contact with them, so we can maybe have a discussion with them on doing that and removing all previous members, so we can then look at appointing new ones.
I know both of them.
Oh, wonderful.
Tony Gosman and Ann Eitzel?
Yeah.
I could contact both of them if you want. And just, what do you want me to ask them, just if they remember?
If they remember who was all on there, and then if one of them would want to be the secretary to basically take everybody off, it sounds like.
Ann lives in Alec, of course, and Tony Gosman is, I think he's still here somewhere in town. I could contact them and, and ask him you want one of them to be like the secretary?
Yeah, that's what it looks like in her letter. And I haven't been able to get her on the phone, but she's really busy with court, but it looks like we need to have a secretary of the charter commission in order to kind of take everybody off and then appoint new ones.
So if she, say I called Ann and obviously she lives in Alec, so she, would she still have the option then to be, remain on it if she wanted, or?
So she
So the rules are of who can be appointed is in this as well?
She's already on, also, I guess technically she's already still on.
It says that they must be qualified holders of the city.
Yeah, you would be able to be on if you move.
Once they're moved, then they're automatically declared off of it.
Okay.
So yeah, if they know who the, it looks like it says that they know who the secretary is. Otherwise, one of them can be deemed secretary to file a certification with the court along the lines of an affidavit that certifies the facts necessary to have all the previous commission members removed.
Okay.
So once they're removed, then we can submit names of eligible nominees to the court.
Okay, I'm just trying to
It's
You can't believe this, creating
I'm gonna do certificate.
Yep.
And then if you
I
You can take this one.
Alright.
So that's what they'll have to do.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
And once, once you get ahold of them and they're willing to do that, they can get in contact with
Okay.
me and we'll get them, we'll get the city attorney to draw something up.
Should I have them just call you then to file that, or? Or if, like say if Ann agrees, for example, to do it, or Tony for that matter?
Um, if she does contact Allison directly, I'd like her to just let me know, just so we're all on the same page of where we're at on it.
Okay. Okay. Alright, got it, I can, I can take care of that. Alright.
Yeah.
And then we'll all have to kind of keep people in mind, start working on that. I do have one person that, that I've talked to that already volunteered, so that's one out of seven. So if anybody can think of other six brave souls that would be willing to take that on, that would be great. Okay.
Any other questions on that? Okay, so, um
Alright.
Open positions, last meeting, we talked about the two open positions, both interviewed, um both were interviewed this, the last few days, looking at starting in the next few weeks. We are looking at job duties and seeing if we need any changes and how that's all going to work. So
Did you hire for both positions?
We did, so, um
Well.
Yeah, we hired Ashley internally for the accountant position, and then, um
Dan.
Thank you, Recker for the transit position.
Oh, sure, that makes sense, she's been doing that.
Oh, Dan Recker?
Yeah.
Outstanding. Wow, good deal.
So, we'll have one more job position posted.
Good for us, bad for the school district.
I know.
Wow, Deanne's been, she's been running that bus garage for, the bus service for years. Wow.
Yeah. So we're very excited.
Oh, good deal.
Yeah. And then, um, and we talked a little bit before about that EDA disaster grant money. So Russ and Ryan and I met and talked to them. We did present a project, which is to look at doing some upgrading to the lift station at Superior and then fixing some storm sewer issues over by Iowa. We felt that this was, they felt too, that this was a project that could qualify for these loans, so it's a, between the fifty to eighty percent, we're going to ask for eighty. As we move forward in it, you know, our next steps are getting cost estimates, seeing what our share would be, and then we'd have to come to council, because we have to commit monies prior to even applying for this. So just kind of trying to figure out finances before we get there, but so that is a project that we're working, working on and towards.
Any questions, are there any other items on the city manager's newsletter? Hearing none, we shall move on to the board updates. I'll throw it back to the council, if any of you have anything you'd like to report from your various boards.
Obviously, city manager Shrupp covered the tree board, which is great, that's extremely outstanding, that should get us ahead on a lot of things, which is great. And the other one is the planning commission, which obviously we'll see more on that in the future, and so, that's all that I have.
Good deal. What I could report on the chamber, just encourage everybody to get out this Thursday is our the twenty-sixth is moonlight madness, so get out and support our local retailers. Not really a chamber event, but we do have Chancellor Janet Erickson, Shrung Erickson is getting her inauguration is this Thursday at eleven fifteen, so if anybody has an interest, that's, that's happening out at the university, so that's kind of a big deal, she's the seventh chancellor that we've had. So, that's, they got a lot of activities kind of planned around that, starts eleven fifteen and then throughout the afternoon, there's certain things going on. And then I guess the next chamber function would be November sixteenth, the parade of lights, so if you want to get a element together, just better start working on it. That's really all I had on the chamber. Anybody else have anything? Nothing? Alright. Any other business to come? Alright, any other business to come before the council, I guess on the flags, I guess I wanted to touch base on that. Just so we're clear on how that works, are we following the governor's orders, or do we have our own kind of policy?
So we don't have a policy, and um I don't know if it's ever been. Uh, I don't know how they did it prior.
We did.
So this last time, um Russ had uh heard that flags were at half-staff. For Israel, so he did put them down, they didn't come up when they, well, one of them, he said they got two out of the, the three up. Um, so I did sign up for notifications, and then we'll just kind of go from there.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's good, I, thanks for doing that, I know it's just one more thing that. You know, you have to keep track of, but I think it's important that we stay on top of that, so. Good deal. Anything else to come before the council?